You're watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the November 17th meeting of the Michigan City Commission for Women. You can find more information for this meeting at www dot accesslaporte county dot org.
So, 5:33, Women's Commission making call to order.
Can you see today's date?
Today's, oh, today's date is November 17th, 2022. Thank you. Role call. Go ahead and just do that. Albertine Allen here. Christina Isabel here. Nicole Coleman. Belle Lee.
Present.
Bonnie Schaaf. Sarah Jones.
Present.
Great. Anna Lysine.
It's me. I'm here.
Veronica Martin is running late. And Angie Nastutch, our city council rep, is not present. We will make this nice and quick today. We just need to do the approval of our minutes from the October 22nd annual meeting. One, two. Everyone got that?
Yes.
I can make a motion that we approve the minutes for October 22nd.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. What was that? Although what I did just notice is we do need to reapprove the August 18th minutes, but I don't have those on me, so we will attach that to our next meeting. I apologize for not seeing that. Treasurer's report.
So, I actually. Pardon?
Did I define yourself?
I'm the treasurer, Charmaine Lysine. Poor Anna. So, I actually provided a recap of what I had sent to Christina a couple of weeks ago that kind of outlined our revenue from our gala as well as expenses and then what current balance looks like. So, revenue from sponsors and tickets now, I still, I'll put a caveat. I have requested the general ledger for October, November just to make sure we've captured all the revenue, all the checks we might have been waiting for. So, we're looking at $14,775.15 of revenue. By the time we looked at expenses from rental to food, entertainment catering, and flowers and printing, we spent $6,948.85, which gave us a net profit of $7,826.30. That brings our account balance to $22,626.92. You'll see that there in bold. Now, again, I'll put the caveat. Once I have the ledgers from October, November, I should have a final for our December meeting. Just have a full accounting and year-end balance for us as we get ready to move into 2023.
Great. And it's pretty exciting that we were very close to that number of seeing what we were going to spend on August 26th.
Yeah, exactly.
Now, and then we made that, so that's awesome.
I make a motion that we accept the treasurer's report.
Just five minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. And I would just like to throw out removing this review ordinance of roles of commission and attendance policy until the following meeting where we have everybody or even potentially the new people. But I will say that, well, I can quickly say the attendance policy is you can only miss three. We do have the Zoom option, and so I will try to make a change to have our meetings in the, it just means we would have to move from this location to downstairs, and I need to get that, like, officially.
If you don't have a Zoom account, I believe they are only limited to a certain amount of time now, so, which is an hour, I think.
Oh, okay.
As long as, or forty, there might be forty minutes if there's not, like, a subscription.
Okay. So, I think.
So, because we're part of Access La.
I don't know.
Port, they do all the Zoom for us if we're in the council room. If we're there.
Yeah. So, I will try to make that change so that it becomes a little bit easier if people can't make it to the meeting since we did approve that in August of 2021.
So, did you make a motion that we remove the attendance policy review until after new members?
Yes.
A second.
Thank you. Just so that we have more people, and I can send that to you ahead of time. It'd be easier. Okay, so we're on to our next one. We're moving December.
Just a made a motion.
Oh, 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 all in favor to move the roles and commission and attendance policy review till the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. We have two commissioners' terms coming to end in December. Nicole Coleman, who is this current secretary, and Shar here, who is our treasurer. One is a mayor appointee and one is a women's commission appointee. So, we need to.
Who are you, Shar? I'm the women's commission appointee.
Yes. So, any suggestions anyone has, we can talk about that now. Is that what we're doing yet?
Don't you want to stay? I am looking at a pretty crazy 2023 of travel, which is going to probably knock me out with the attendance policy.
Okay.
And what I shared with Christina is that I just feel it's probably in the best interest of the commission because I'm going to be missing so much. They have somebody full-time and dedicated. I've loved my time here. I've had six years.
Wow.
It's been a while.
Yeah, so the women's commission, so my appointment is a four-year term, and so that leaves two years on my term. And I, as I shared with Christine, I think it's a good opportunity to look at maybe where we might have some gaps to bring on.
For.
You know, we talked about people, but everybody we discussed didn't live in the. I know.
And so what we do know is that you do need to live in Michigan City.
Okay.
And so that is limiting a little bit to some people that have expressed interest with us.
So, not LaPorte County, specifically Michigan City?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
I know.
We did, actually, just the other day, when I met a woman who is purchasing Lake Shore Coffee, and she could be an interesting person. She's an entrepreneur in our town. It might be a nice fit.
Will she be living in the city?
I'm assuming she does. I did not ask. I just, we just told her about the commission, and she expressed interest, and so.
So, I'm asking on your Trail Creek, but that's not Michigan City.
I'm in, I'm in county, I'm technically, is it Cool Spring Township? But I'm still technically, because I'm not in city limits, but I am Michigan City at the same time, which Trail Creek would be kind of under the same area, which is kind of a gray spot, but.
So, Trail Creek falls under.
They're township. But I'm also a township.
Yeah.
Well, we could, but my mailing address is Michigan City, Indiana. I don't put Cool Spring Township.
Oh, okay, so, so.
So, Trail Creek might be.
Trail Creek is Michigan City, Indiana, too. Yeah.
Okay.
So, I think that would be.
Because we did question that with my appointment, and it was.
Okay, so there's maybe two or three.
Okay.
Okay.
Right. So.
I'm sorry, we could also ask the city attorney for clarity because I know that there was some new boundaries within districts for the city council. And so I don't know where the different parts of the fall. So, we could ask the city attorney to chime in on.
I just don't get city water and garbage.
Okay.
We.
So, that's something we need to ask, but that is something that we need to, I think we go in the new people in January, so we have about, you know, six weeks to.
Get busy.
Get busy and reach out and see who's interested.
So, election of officers, too, has that, was that discussed during the annual? No. So, new officers should take over in January, right?
Yeah.
So, in the past, you've had, like, a nominating.
Ah, I'm missing.
Did you do that in December? Or is it?
I think December or so, they take over in January.
So, I need to include that in our December meeting, then, that we are nominating. But what if the new people want to be?
Well, you need to have the nominating committee in place before December. And then we need to make the nominations in December, so they take effect in January.
Did we have that last time?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh.
It's been a while.
I think January was like a summary of what? Wasn't really like a, kind of a discussion, like a summary of what?
The roles are.
Something we did for the years.
Yeah.
That they had to present to someone.
Well, in March, we're supposed to do something, but we haven't done that for the city council.
Yeah.
So, the nominating committee? Okay.
I don't remember that.
I don't remember that.
I think because maybe Joanne was a part and.
Joanne Anquist was a part of that.
Yeah. I think those who were a part of it are not here tonight or have left the commission, so.
Okay. So, on that nominating committee, is that two people, three people? How does that?
I think we had three.
Okay. And then, I just, I mean, that's why I'm slightly confused. I just got a phone call, someone asking me if I would do it. Was that the nominating committee? Or is that just somebody calling me and saying, hey, would you be like, you know? And then I said, okay, yeah, I would like, I'll take the president decision. But, okay, so like. So, I don't remember.
Committee would be one, two, three people. And then they would present three, two or three names or whatever. And if someone wants to nominate themselves, that's fine at that time, too. And then we just take a vote.
Oh.
Yeah. So, you're willing to be president again? That's fine. So, we're going to put your name down here right. Give three names for a nominating committee.
Okay.
What do you think then, if somebody else wants to do it, they have that opportunity?
Yes.
Is that a thing, a nominating committee?
I can be part of the nominating committee.
Okay. Great.
Just don't make me chair.
And it sounds like Albertine Allen.
Sounds like Albertine is good.
Is on the nominating committee.
But she's a busy lady.
Well, excuse pardon, you want to be our nominating committee? There's only four of us here. Can't count Christina.
I don't know very many people there.
Veronica's on her way.
We would. We would.
Veronica.
This is my first approach as a bench trainer.
Full and told. Veronica be all and told.
I just put Belle Lee down.
Okay, great. So, that's our nominating committee.
I'm all the toes.
And then.
Then we need to have a meeting before December. And if anyone's interested, they need to give us a call, and then we can make nominations or we can recommend people.
Okay.
And then we vote on it in December, then they take office in January. That way, we're not behind.
Okay. Okay.
So, when do you guys want to meet? We can discuss it off-line.
Call tomorrow.
You'll call me tomorrow?
I'll have a tough start tomorrow.
No, I'll be busy tomorrow morning. Don't call me in the morning.
Yes, ma'am, but I'm saying. You can call me sometime tomorrow, though.
Okay.
This is a small text message, and just, you know, a little.
So, those of you that are here, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Is anyone else interested in the other positions available that are here? Albertine, you staying on as VP?
I thought I was going to be off in December.
I know.
You are misspoken. Some more time.
You're going to stay on as president?
Okay. Okay. Okay, here we go. So, then we just really need to fill.
We need a secretary.
Secretary.
President, president and vice president.
Yeah. Great. Can I, anything else anybody needs to say about that situation? New commissioners?
Well, I would, I'm new. Are there any bylaws that speak about how long someone has to be on the commission before they are nominated for officers' roles?
No. Okay.
Well, I'm super fifty years.
Hey!
Be glad to be a secretary.
So, I think Bill just nominated her as vice secretary. Good? Okay, yeah. We can go to Dave.
I love that commercial, that's incredible.
We are. We were talking about the nominating committee formation for January elections, and Christina's question was, is anyone interested in serving as treasurer or secretary to be considered on the, for the nominations? We formed a nominating committee that consists of Ms. Allen, Shar, and Belle Lee. And so Christina has graciously agreed to be considered for president. Ms. Tiny has graciously agreed to be vice president. So, we're looking for a secretary and a treasurer. Interested in any of those positions this year?
Not at this time.
Do you have the nominations?
I haven't called anybody. Ms. Veronica, who are you? She's running late.
She's running late.
I'm not the only one. I mean, I've been on the phone since Florida Congress with somebody. I just knew I'd be on by five if they were thorough.
Okay, so, yeah, this is, which, we're going to have to fill these positions, and we will. So, just ponder, keep pondering. Funding policy.
I'm sorry, before we get there, I would not be opposed to accepting the nomination for secretary.
Excellent. Oh, great.
I love to take notes, just in case.
Great.
So, we're down to.
Funding policy. Funding policy. So, I didn't have one to give to say, I only printed a couple. So, just looking over our donations, that the $500 was our rate, and it felt like that wasn't really enough of a funding support at this time. So, looking at raising that to $1,000. Applications can request up to $1,000 each.
Okay, can I just ask a question?
Yes.
You guys reviewed the ordinance? Yeah.
Oh, we're taking that to next.
Oh, you tabled that?
We tabled that so that we had more people here.
Okay. Because if you look at our mission and whatnot, we weren't in the business of actually giving people money. We were in the business of actually trying to educate people in the different areas of our commissioners. And we came up with giving the money because of the past mayor, I mean, past mayor, Ron Meyer, decided to make us one of the donors of, you know, one of the recipients.
Of the mayor's ball.
Of the mayor's ball. So, that gave us money. So, then that's when we said we would, you know, try to help people. But our mission was really just to try to get equity for women. Is our main mission is trying to get equity for women in the business place and for health conditions and issues, for education, trying to get women involved in jobs that are non-traditional for women. No, you know, that, that's kind of like, if you look at our ordinance, that's kind of what the ordinance was trying to do, was making sure that women had equitable rights, that we were represented in every area, you know? That was kind of our mission. So, I don't understand why we're talking about increasing the amount that we're giving people.
Well, because Dune Brook, Dune Brook could use a lot of funding, I'm sure, right? And they only, we only gave them $500 when we have $22,000 in the bank.
Well, we now have $22,000. I said six, oh.
Those programs do the outreach work so well. The commission wants to do work helping them.
Help, help people.
Yeah.
Right? So, you know, and then, and what are the ways that we can do that, then? That, how will we utilize the funding that we have to create the programs? I mean, we talked at the last meeting.
At the annual meeting.
At the annual meeting.
Wasn't that what was discussed? At the annual meeting. At the meeting, we talked about the projects that we wanted to fund, and we didn't think that $500 would be.
Okay.
Amount that we could give to someone that would actually help them out. And so, we would be helping them in all ways by helping them with education, startup funding or whatever for females. So, you know, I mean, it's nothing in our ordinance that says we can't give funding out. No, no, I'm not saying that, when I say we can't give funding out, I'm just saying that our mission was not necessarily to give funding, but to just keep. That would be a great help. Yeah. So, so that's why you guys were thinking about raising it to $1,000.
But isn't that what we've done?
You can do more.
For the last 10 years, is to give away.
Yeah, we have been money away, yes.
Thirty-seven thousand, you know?
Yes, yeah.
So, maybe that is a deeper question, though, that you're asking, and would have been good to have at the annual meeting, you know? But we can continue that here. It's like, so then what, what do we want? You know, what do we want to focus on? I mean, right now, we have, and the potential from, you know, meeting the state commissioner, we have opportunity for more funding. I actually, they are open to giving us funding. So, then, if we aren't developing a program, then who is? Or who, you know, what are our partnerships? Can we bring a girls empowerment program here? And that's really what we're trying to do, but.
Right.
But we're also, this isn't a job, right? So, then our only way to let people know is through all of us as commissioners reaching out to people, letting them know that we're here, that we are looking for partners, we would like to partner with anybody who's got an interesting program.
Yeah, I just had that question. I just wanted to know.
But, but in terms of funding, for people that, like, bigger organizations or anybody to ask us for just $500 when today, $500.
You can't do as much.
Buy you anything.
Right.
So, that opportunity for, if someone needs support for continuing education for themselves or if someone's got a program, like, we have, Stepping Stones hasn't reached out to us for a long time. So, so maybe.
On here, the organization name, is it specifically just for organizations?
No.
To apply this?
No. No.
So.
Individuals can apply on.
Those wording, that wording might need to be just altered so that it is open.
There may be changes.
Great.
And also, I mean, it says requests are up to $1,000 each. So, if it's not.
Right.
A project we feel would cost that much, we can always counter it and say, well, we'll offer this much rather than your full amount, or.
Yeah.
So, that, that opens up to.
Okay. So, but the truth is, no one has come to us for any, anything.
Lately, lately, because COVID.
A long time ago.
Three years.
Yeah, so, people aren't actually reaching out to us, so.
But I think it's because of COVID just finished, really, this year, and people had some extra funding.
Yeah.
Why people think that happens.
People don't know.
And that's true, too.
I've spoken with a few people who are doing really awesome things for women, the community, children, and I mention it, and they're like, what, really? And, yeah. So, it could just be.
That they don't know.
We've not gotten it out there that we can help.
They wouldn't have a mission statement.
Right.
But they would have a need.
Right.
So, they could put that there.
So, that's, so, this is good. This is just, what I wanted to do is go over this request for donations. It's been on the website for a long time. And just kind of made a couple little changes, but, so, yeah, keep giving me these individual organizations.
Okay, so, we need to make a motion, then, right, to increase it from 1,000, I mean, from 500 to 1,000. So, I make a motion to increase our possible funding to 1,000 from 500.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. And then, yeah, any other feedback on this form? That's good, some mission, if necessary, be there for an individual.
But even as individuals, they still have a mission, still have a mission, even if it's not like a full statement.
Purpose.
Yeah. Or purpose.
I was like, purpose or need, that, like, mission, purpose or need.
Right, because we gave the money to Kathy, she didn't have a mission.
Right.
She wasn't an organization. Kathy Velasco, was it? Velasco? For the.
Car.
Yeah, the woman that did the drive, the car race, the female driver, race car driver.
Yeah.
She did the research on it and whatnot.
And I think it is true that we haven't gotten the word out yet that this opportunity exists.
Been a COVID time, too, so we've been kind of limited to what we could do because I haven't had a ball in, going on three years now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, is there something that you might want to put out, a press release that this is available? Or do we, how?
We could do that at the beginning of the year.
During the event.
Say, hey, that way it's out there so that people know that there's that opportunity.
And I'm going to actually broaden that a bit. Maybe there's an opportunity in, you know, to, as you have new officers and a couple of new members come onto the commission, January could be a good opportunity to reacquaint with their, everybody with who and what the purpose. And then, you know, of course, tying in that we do have money available for initiatives or programs that fall within the purview or within the criteria of the Women's Commission.
Yeah.
And also, I think it would be a good idea doing our, like, we did our 10-year celebration, and then in August is Women's, what is it?
Equality Day.
Equality. So, it's just Equality Day. We don't get a whole month, do we?
Just one day. Just one day.
But the other thing that is coming up is the Women's International Day, which is.
Yeah, no, it's two days. Yeah. It was two days.
Yeah.
So, yeah, doing those two times, I think that's when we should definitely announce it, like, say in the paper, that the Michigan City Women's Commission has scholarships for women that are.
We could focus it if we, I mean, honestly, we could say this year, we're looking for, you know,
Right.
Spring, we're wanting blah, blah, blah.
Exactly.
Women's health or entrepreneurship or, you know?
But we did make a statement that we were going to focus this year on infant mortality because it's racing in this county and across Indiana is one of the highest ones in the country. Wow. So, infant mortality does, it's before, during, and after. So. Yeah, it's before you, you have to have healthcare before, then during, and then after because a lot of women go into mental health issues after, too.
So, in the, so, our first call in January, once we reconvene and everyone can understand, maybe that first press release is stating that we are looking for healthcare projects. But we also talked about gathering some of the organizations together to find out where the crossover is, why the education isn't getting, you know, like, how is it moving through our community? Which.
Well, there are a lot of organizations out there that are doing things on infant mortality other than minority health, but it's not inclusive. And that's, that's where the issue comes in. We're kind of like isolated, women of color are isolated.
Yeah.
And so, then you have the Dula program, which is free, and that works hand-in-hand with infant mortality, too. And sometimes other organizations don't want to share, and that's bad. They don't, they don't want to share, and they're not inclusive. When you get to the table, you're the only one there. So.
I think we need to bring them together. I still think that. I think we need to bring them together to the table and find out, like, cross-stream, like, the potential of giving, you know, everybody 10 minutes to see what the organization is.
Very cooperative.
Doing the work is a very cooperative organization. Yeah, I can say that, honestly, but I, I had experience with it.
Kind.
So, um, there are other ones out there too, but then sometimes, I'm just, not saying all of them are, but Doom Brook has always been helpful.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
They have a new director now too, she's, she's helped a lot of people even before she became director, uh, with the prenatal dental. A lot of people don't know that mothers need to have a dental exam and treatment after six weeks of pregnancy. So, you know, it's a lot of stuff, but, um, it's just a lot of information that, oh, everybody's not getting.
Yeah. So may, I mean, but that potentially could be, you know, the list, the resource list, you might have gotten that. I, I, I just started like a, to kind of pull things together. But would that help us connect people to? Or is this different, are these two different projects?
So to me, they seem different, right? Because of course we need to recharge this, but one of the things that, you know, we discussed, um, we had coffee. One of the things that we discussed is talking about bringing a lot of the agencies to the table, and just let them tell their story of what they're doing. Like, maybe a ten-minute presentation on their programs and their mission. Because unfortunately, like you said, all these different organizations are compartmentalized. And yes, you may have a website, but if I don't know you exist, then I'm never gonna look for your website.
That's true.
And so, I think as the Commission for Women, we need to establish who and what is being done, and who is performing services in our community, and how do we get people to access them? And if we don't know them, and it's hard to share.
You know, I'm gonna say that people don't have.
Yes.
Like, if somebody was homeless, and I was trying to search for somebody, it's right across the hall from me at the Minority Health Coalition's office, right in the same building.
Yeah.
Mm.
And they, they serve, uh.
You don't get trustee office?
Mm-mm.
Who?
No, Adam's House.
Adam's House.
I, I just found that one, yeah, no, I, I have no idea.
It's in the same building with me.
Really, yeah.
So, and, and you know, so a lot of people don't know.
Right.
So maybe.
And she's there.
So maybe we, as the Women's Commission, yes, we're gonna give away funds, but maybe we should have a presentation, invite these different organizations to the table, and call it a Women's Commission Workshop, and invite the community to hear these presentations.
I think that would be great, that would be very nice.
Basically being the bridge between the people in the community who need the resources and the resources.
Right.
Is what you need, and here's where.
But it's not like a health fair.
No, no.
It's not a health fair, it's different than that, right?
This is just a forum.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. We're offering services, we're offering information.
Right.
And I think that would be something great for us to do, um, because there are so many resources.
A lot of things going on.
There's a lot of things going on, but if you, 'cause most people find out about programs because they need them.
Mm-hmm.
During, when they.
Right.
And now you're in high stress, and you're in emergency mode.
Right.
I would like to know where something is before I need it.
Right, right.
So we can each try to get a list. Well, so I started one, and I will put this on a, um, um, Dropbox.
Mm-hmm.
Right, is that what we use, no, what do we use, we Google.
Google Drive with it.
Google Drive, so you can start to add things, so you'll see there's, um.
So I have a, I have clarity before you go over.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, are you all thinking about the fact that perhaps we should set a date to do a community?
Yes, I think so.
Right.
I didn't hear a motion, I'm sorry, I was just.
Okay. Would you make, would you make a motion?
Out, yes, and so I, I wanted to, before I put it to the floor, to, if y'all can back to the other day. So I make a motion that we, as the Women's Commission, have a community outreach forum from, information forum, from several organizations within the city, to present their programs to the community.
I second.
She seconded.
Okay.
Who's taking notes? You taking notes too?
Yes, my aunt.
Oh, okay.
Yes, you said, uh, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um.
Can we pick a date?
Can you pick a date, like, i- is this something that would align with the?
It would have.
Yeah.
It would align with our, it would align with our commission.
Uh.
I would think March, maybe.
That's what I was thinking, March.
Yeah, do you want to perhaps do it on?
Yeah, when it's, when it's Women's International Women's.
International, what is a?
Is that.
I think it's usually the, uh, like the first week, like the eighth, first of the.
Second week in March, or something.
Maybe the eighth or something, goes.
That's also classic cancer.
Okay.
March eighth, is it okay? March twenty, twenty-three, what day is that on?
Wednesday.
It's on a Wednesday?
Yeah.
So it's the first Wednesday of the month, and then we can have, we can still have a meeting the third Wednesday.
We can have our meeting the third Wednesday.
We need the third Wednesday. Oh, I'm sorry, Thursday.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's the fir-, you said that's the first Wednesday?
The first Wednesday.
Yeah, as far as I know, it is not, no meeting on that day.
March of the eighth?
March eighth.
She said it was a Wednesday.
Wednesday.
First Wednesday?
The first Wednesday of March first.
First Wednesday is, uh, of course.
But that's in the evening.
But this is March eighth, so that's not, so that's the second Wednesday.
Oh, then I saw a meeting, but it's in the daytime, social sex.
Right, so we could maybe do a morning forum, or an afternoon forum, or we could be like, at March.
Um.
Um, that would be a great day for, I think that would be the best day, then that incorporates our mission.
Right.
Our fulfillment for.
Women's International Day.
For Women's National Day, as great partnerships.
Yeah.
So, I make a motion that we should do this.
We can, we can get all that skipped later on, the time and date or whatever, but we think.
And so then, yes, good that we have some funds that we can help support this with some food available for the, you know, conference.
Right. And that's when you're probably gonna get people there.
Contributions and donations for food and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, great, I like, I mean, I'm, I've been.
So we're gonna go for March.
So emotional.
Try to trust me, this is the beginning.
Look at us, we're.
Woo, it's happening.
Yeah.
Good, 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 good.
Thank you, thank you.
So was there, was there a motion for March eighth?
Thank you.
How do we, how do you get your, the other, uh, participants, partners to commit to that date? Um.
You start sending them.
We start sending out invites.
Save their date.
Okay, yeah, okay. So.
And how many participants do we want to limit it to?
Well, first we gotta find a place and everything else, huh?
And that is part of the reason I'm asking how many participants, because if we wanna do ten agencies from the community, and give them ten minutes each, then we're looking at two hours of presentation.
That's it.
Right, it, and then that te- tells us how large of an area we even need to start.
Well, you started your list, how many have you come up with?
Well, um, it, you have, there's a list right there, does someone have it?
I do.
I don't have very many, even if I've just started amassing things, and when I realized that, I just realized we have eight food banks in our area.
There's a lot of resources, the problem with them is they're most of the time at ten o'clock in the morning on weekday.
Oh.
If I needed a turkey from McDonald's the other day, I couldn't have gone to get it, 'cause I was at work.
Yeah. Now, what was that, seven-thirty in the morning, for the turkey? You had to be working seven-thirty?
She goes to work at the school.
By the time she got out of line, she went and played with.
So a lot of them are, are during the weeks in the middle of the day, where people cannot get to them, for whatever reason, transportation, work schedules, things like that. A lot of parents work during the day when their kids are at school, and that's when these food drives are done.
Yeah, I did notice there were a lot during the day.
Yeah, they are during the day.
So one of the things that we could do to alleviate that would be to solicit donations from them, and then, as the Women's Commission, we would be willing for one evening or two, one evening for two or three, two hours in the evening to distribute what was given during the day. I see.
Yeah, you're. I see. You're trying to ignore the fact that you do that.
Yeah, because there are a lot, but people can't access them, and so.
So you're.
If we're going to.
But you're getting off the subject now.
No.
Yeah, yeah, we're, that's.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
But as you're looking at the list, the only.
It's something to think about.
Healthcare services, I, I kind of got to.
So then we're gonna, so March eighth would probably be an evening event then.
No, we didn't say that.
No.
I know we didn't say it, but.
Um, and you also think those representatives are with you during the day, so for them to come would be on work hours, so during the day would be a good option.
Well, you know, if they're, if they're in charge of their job, they can come during the day.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
They can come during the day, right.
It would probably be more convenient for the organizations to come during the day, because that's their work hours and not their family time.
Yes, great. I'm. So as you can see, I don't have that many, my, I, I don't know the, the full list, so this is where we need help. Right now, in Minority Health Coalition, the Dula Program, WIC, um, Health Link, Franciscan, um, they always talk about some milk sharing program, I thought that was kind of interesting, um.
I think that's great, great stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
I think so too.
Milk, yeah.
What's it, what's it called?
So I don't know if there are other, other organizations that you guys think should be invited to the table for the maternal infant health. So probably Doom Brook, right, 'cause they do work with kids. I mean, I do have, um, PACE there, Swanson Center, uh, Clothing Support, Food Banks, um, Utility Bill Support, Rental, Professional Services, like, do we want someone from the.
So.
Army House, I mean. So there's also the Children Education Services, Doom Brook, Hallidin, Head Start. And then in terms of shelters, I have four listed there.
Where are you at for show?
And we don't have, um.
On the other page, I mean, change.
We don't have North Central Community Action Agency on here.
No, I don't.
And they help with, um, utility bills and rental assistance.
Okay.
But, um, I was wondering about the township, like Michigan Township trustees, obviously, Michigan Township trustee, and the Cool Spring Township.
Right.
That's good.
It's a North Care.
North Central Community Action Agency.
So I do have a, I, I know we're talking about who to invite, who, who is the audience?
Well.
Who is this for?
I think it's for organizations to know who each other is, and to find out how we're creating partnerships. Like, and if, if, if more people are doing, um, the, the prenatal packages but aren't doing the other thing, then how do we get that, you know, like, how are they sharing the resources, um, as well? Like, who, who are they sending people to? I, I mean, there's probably a lot of things that are, aren't on here.
Like Catholic charities are doing some of the same things that, um, Township Trustees Office is doing, and Adam's House is doing, and then they have Habitat for Humanity, a lot of stuff off the top of my head.
And I'm sorry, I miss Catholic.
Catholic charities.
And Catholic charities, they still do what you, utility and rental assistance, right?
They're in the building too, I don't know exactly what all they do, but I think they help with like funeral arrangements, some. I know the Trustees Office does, but I don't know exactly, I don't wanna say what they actually give money for, I help with. Can you say in the building, can you say their address? Twenty-six oh-one East Michigan Boulevard, twenty-six oh-one. For, you know, rental assistance, things like that.
Yeah.
They do that.
So I think the other thing.
So yeah, so who is our, so, so this is a list, this is gonna be up, it'd be great if you, if you can go and like add things. Um, um, would be good. Who is our audience? Is, is it about, I think it's about organizations, to me, this is what I, before we open it up to the larger public, we need to know like what we can share from all these organizations.
So I think the other important piece for this would be to have press attendance.
It also gives an opportunity to see where there's maybe some lacking in resources. So if we've got, if we have seven to ten food sources, but no, you know, for edible food, like people, like big people, maybe there's lacking in formula, and we didn't, we can see those relationships and what's missing, to then seek out further help.
Formula, diapers, things like that.
'Cause we know Doom Brook does, I don't know if that's true, I was just giving an example, but.
Yeah, 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 no, no, exactly, that's exactly. And do you have Salvation Army on there?
I do.
Your Salvation Army.
I, I, I didn't know why, I mean, it doesn't really go under Clothing Support.
Clothing.
Which is like.
Salvation Army.
And also to see.
'Cause they actually, they do so much, they do way more than I know now.
Right, right.
And also to see what those places offer, because you might, uh, people might associate Doom Brook with only one service, and they, they may not know all the services that it could provide, which, I was one of those people, I didn't know. And same thing for Salvation Army, I know they do services, I just don't really know the extent of their services.
Yeah. Yeah. So then this list, though, would be for everybody, right? Or then would, like, say maybe after this meeting, then we could like promote.
We could put it right in the windows. Wors that you could wipe off and put on a refrigerator.
Yeah.
You know, that they could use it a magnet and put it on a refrigerator, and they wouldn't have to, 'cause going through the telephone book or calling information is.
Yeah.
So we could.
We don't even get them anymore, do we?
They get the information, sure.
No, no, telephone books.
Yeah.
I was remembering the last time I got one.
We got a little bit of, you know, we just lived on this, for our first movement, just to.
Yeah, and half the stuff that's in the cities, not in there.
They used to have a book, it was about this thing, with all the resources.
Mm-hmm.
Where is this at? When it, they used to have it, when they tell you to.
It was here, it was.
All two-one-one.
It was, it used to, it used to be a book. Yes, I did look that up.
That book is about this thing, and it used to have all the community resources in it.
Mm-hmm. And I was gonna say, as, as a service we could provide, after we get these resources together, doing maybe a brochure or a pamphlet, and giving them to these resource organizations, because a lot of the times when a person needs help, they go to what they know, and then that organization can also say, hey, here's this, if you need other resources in these areas, so then they have that outsourcing to be able to hand out.
Yeah.
If we're already compiled.
Yeah, I see where you have, um, Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, that's North Central.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I learned a lot when I was searching up, um, what all was around here, um. Um.
So one of the things that we were discussing is everyone from here sending an email with a list of organizations that you know. Because even though, you know, we did a search for them, we may not have found some ones that you know, or some friends or your family have used in the past. So, as commissioners, if you all would send a list, even if it's duplicated what, you know, what we already have, then we can clean those things out and make our list.
Yeah.
Wonderful, 'cause I know.
Which is what she's saying, if she shares it, then I can go in, so Google, the, the Google forum, she can share it, and I can go put my list right in there, without having to, oh, did you send the updated copy? It, it's all right there, and we can edit it live, together.
And so that, you said it's on this sheet, that Google does?
No, I haven't put it, I haven't posted it, I just made this, and then was gonna show you guys, and then, then I'll send you a link to it.
Oh, he can, can send it to one of us, so we can add it in for you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so that's, I think, I'm very excited that this potentially can, can happen, even as the smaller first program in March, I think that would be really exciting, so. Um, so that's, I think, I'm very excited that this potentially can, can happen, even as the smaller first program in March, I think that would be really exciting, so.
Look at your presentation.
Yay! Um, I guess by December, maybe we would need to, or at least by January, given people enough time, right? January notice on that, so we've got two more sessions to try to figure out.
Get on their calendar.
What are the right organizations.
So the other thing, uh, you'll want to do is to pre-approve a budget.
Great.
That will help, um, expedite checks.
Got it. Yep.
So would you like to say, would you like to make a motion for setting a budget right now?
Um, gosh, I don't know if we're ready for that. Are we ready to make a budget announcement? I don't think so.
Do we gotta find out what we're gonna do first?
We're gonna figure out how many people will be there.
Are you gonna print those folders, are you gonna have a snap, or are you gonna?
Yeah, we're gonna print them, yeah.
Yeah, so my thing is because the holiday season is approaching.
We got January through March.
I know, but we wanna be on some, we want to be able to say, send our save the date information out by January. So if we ask the controller now for a budget, nobody's gonna be mad if we return some money. Um, and because of the holiday season, I'm just saying, uh, but we don't know what, what it's gonna cost. Do we have to have a room, or are we gonna have to rent facilities, so, so we need to get those things before we ask for money.
And, uh, I'll just clarify, um, it's a budget we approve as a Women's, uh, Commission, which shows up in the minutes. And then, uh, the treasurer, then as we need money, can just send it into the controller. Uh, they just have to have minutes that show where we approved the budget, so. So we can approve a budget without putting money in, putting a number to it. Yeah, yeah, because it's, yeah. Right. Okay. Let me see, so you wanna do that before we go?
Well, I think we.
Make a motion to, uh, establish an, uh, approval.
So it's in the minutes, they report.
Budget.
So you're making a motion to approve a budget for the, uh, Community Outreach Form for March the eighth?
Yes, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the budget for the Women's Commu-, Women's Commission Community Form.
And you wanna?
On March eighth.
You wanna add a number?
Yes.
Say.
Five thousand dollars.
There we go.
There you go. Nobody's mad about if we return money, this is for March eighth twenty-three.
Yes.
And that will cover, uh, we probably wanted to note, that will cover.
That should cover.
Facilities, printing, food.
Any tech needs. Tech needs, um. Give me a second. Oh, we need a second, too.
I second the motion for that.
All in favor?
Uh.
Thank you so much. I'm so excited, it's getting done.
Okay.
My asthma's so confused, I don't know where we are now.
She's so happy.
Well, we're not quite finished with the funding policies update, the limits and process of this form, I guess.
Yeah.
You jumped ahead.
Well, I thought we had agreed on a thousand.
Yeah.
We did agree on a thousand, but the, but the process we didn't.
Totally got it.
Okay, finished.
Process in terms of, well, we, I'll need to still alter this form a little bit, um, then you mean in terms of having a press release go out, or just putting it on the website?
Well, I think we should, we can put it on the website, but we, we'll put it, we'll send out, save the date for March eighth, and then at that time, we could, uh, put it in the paper that we're saving it, you know, the date for the event or whatever. As far as the form, um, we just have it available at that event.
I'm, I'm confused.
Yeah, I'm slightly confused.
Well, it seems like it's two separate things to me.
Yeah, maybe.
So you've got the, um, um, there's the form for anyone who is interested in requesting funds to support whatever. So that's a separate issue to me than, uh, the event plan for March eighth.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
So we're due with March eighth, now you're back to this, this form for the, for, uh, donations or grants or contributions?
I didn't know if she got her question answered.
Is, is that where you work, I think?
No, I didn't have a question, I, I, I was trying to finish up this form, but, um, so I didn't have a, my question was answered, uh, the, the reason why we wanted to do the thousand dollars, and then that's when I made the motion.
Yeah.
That we up it to the thousand dollars.
So I will amend this document and bring it in for December, and then we can.
Approve it.
Approve it.
Okay.
We just got the, you know, the go-ahead for it to up it to a thousand, now we'll clean up the document itself, um, and then potentially do a, I, I don't, a, a press release for it, or, you know, just letting people know it's available.
I mean, maybe, cause it's on the website, but who listens to the website?
Who knows, exactly.
So I think looking at other media forums to put it on, Facebook, social media.
Yeah.
Um, places that.
I mean, we just have to make it a doc, like a call, service call for, you know, it could say open call, but.
Well, I know, if, when we have the forum, then we can, we can talk about that too, and that will spread the word.
Mm-hmm.
And it also be on the radio.
We could make an advertising plan.
And it also be on the radio.
Mm-hmm.
May I, um, please, that, we may wanna add, uh, I'm thinking for future treasurer use. If approved, who the check should be made payable to and where it'll be. Yeah, you know, if you request, you know, if this is, um, accepted by the Women's Commission, where, who and where should a check go?
Yeah.
And, and then I also have another question about this process, um, is there a committee that does a review, or do we review it all as a full commission? And is it open to public discussion, or is that a executive meeting that we discuss that? Because I think, we, because we're in a small town, you know, we often, we want to have as much transparency as possible. We don't wanna think that this is a popularity contest, that we're passing our money as a popularity contest either.
But, you know, in the past, we reviewed it as a full commission.
Mm-hmm.
Think, well, cause I'm new, I'm asking a lot of questions that other people may have, but don't know how to ask.
Right, right. Right, right.
I'm sorry, I'm.
Right.
And we usually add, um, them to come in and, and give a presentation, so then they'll come in, talk about what they're doing, and then they leave.
Okay.
And then we talk about it.
Okay.
And we either approve or done approve.
Okay.
And it's all recorded.
It's all on.
That, that was my question, it's not an exact decision, it's open to public discussion, it's open to public review, okay.
And then, and check, yeah.
Doom Brook did?
Uh, check can only be issued if they, um, we approve it.
And it's in the minutes. And it's in the minutes, right.
And. Those might be some interesting notes, maybe before you pass the treasurer role.
I, I am, I'm compiling a, um, what can I say, how to, uh, just, you know, here's the steps. Um, we learned that, you know, important to approve a budget number before the event, so we're not kinda catching up. Um, the other piece is, um, the other thing I've been tracking is the who we've given money to over the last several years.
Right.
So that we have a good understanding, uh, to see if we have any repeats or to, you know, really can see that we're not playing favorites by any means, because we've got a, we've had a pretty good distribution of who's received. And I think that's gonna be important to continue. Because it makes, um, uh, it easier for, particularly when you have to do the, um, meeting in March, just to be able to recap.
Right.
What's going on.
And if we get it out there well enough, it may be a little more competitive, where we have to really look at those details to make sure that we're representing all areas of our community and not just focusing in one area, is that a good reference?
And I think, uh, I guess one other, uh, I have been retaining this information on spreadsheets and stuff on my computer. Now, I think that we need to find a location that, uh, you know, we would have access to as a Women's Commission, or someplace that is stored that whoever your treasurer is, might forward.
Can we do that Microsoft Office, that the email account goes to this Microsoft Office, I've never really used it, I just get the ma, I get our emails.
The Excel account is, is good.
So maybe we can have it all.
What account?
Excel, you can use Excel program and put, you can put your amount in and what you're spending, it'll populate the answer for you.
Damn it, I called it.
Yes, right.
And Google's free Microsoft is not.
I know, I know, I don't either, I know, I don't either, it's the mail.
That's why I keep on Google.
And actually, our commission, the Human Rights Commission is, I mean, Human Rights Office is, we're under them, we're under their umbrella. And, uh, so any, uh, notes and things that the treasurer has, that you pass on to the next treasurer, if the next treasurer doesn't want them, they can go to the Human Rights Department.
The commission has an email address.
Yes.
You can log into Google through that email address, if you have access to that, and that would be the, the commission drive. And then just share it with our emails, and we'd all have access to any of those documents.
Oh.
Yes, it's fair enough.
Oh, yeah, and you do that, I mean, like, I go, yeah, I would need help, because
Yeah.
Microsoft Office from the city, I always, I just go to their, their, the link they send me, you know, they, they send me, and that's how I can check the mail.
You can just pull up and log in on Google as well with that account.
To Google, yeah, okay.
So do I hear what Sarah's gonna be offering technical assistance in the commission?
I can help with that, that'd be awesome. COVID and e-learning really taught me a lot. Alright, Sarah, I'll reach out to you.
And thank you, Shaw, for compiling with me.
Um, this is really awesome, because we've actually covered every, a lot, and I really am so appreciative of that, even figured out our Women's International Day, and so we still have another till next August to figure out the Women's Equality Day, so we're good, we're really in terrific shape. Um, I guess the one thing that we, my last thought to finish up the call for donation, you know, aspect, is that we do really need to put in what we're willing to go, a budget to get down to. We don't wanna go past a certain amount, like, what if all these people call?
I mean, I got it.
So then we're like, you know, how do, how do we, you know, we need to think through that a little bit.
Yeah.
Now that we're talking, and if we do put a big PR, that we have this funds available, we need to know our limit, um.
Just we have to do some price checking.
Mm-hmm.
And then figure out the best place, the people that will give us, give us a good price. Uh, who prints here in Michigan City, we, there's more than one company, so we need to check that out.
Yeah, yes.
You know, so you get the best price in there, and you must stretch that down.
Right.
So can I make a motion that, since our budget is twenty, since we currently have twenty-two thousand dollars, can I make a recommendation, can I make a motion that our maximum donation for the month is a thousand dollars? That way we know that we can carry the next year for twelve, and still have ten thousand dollars in the bank for miscellaneous and other items that we need to do throughout the course of the year, until we get other funds back in. A thousand dollars a month?
No, doesn't, doesn't seem like very much, like it mean, especially if.
So fifteen hundred dollars a month?
So, I, I mean, I think, uh, you can't go down below.
And that was one of the needs, maybe more demanding in these winter months. You may get three requests, whereas maybe towards the summer, not so many.
I think it ultimately comes down to like what, how much we wanna leave in the bank. And we, we need a limit, like Women's Commission, that we'll always have five thousand dollars in the bank.
Well, those are fundraisers, what did that, what did that run us? So if we needed to do another fundraiser to raise more funds.
Right, then we would have it.
We would need to keep at least this amount, we know we can run a, a major fundraiser here with this amount.
So then that'll be fifteen thousand dollars, so once again, over the next year, that's a cap of eleven hundred? Per month that we give out, or?
Right, and, uh, you've just approved the budget for, you know, March eighth.
Right.
So, you know, you take that out.
Right.
Seventeen.
So I.
So how does that work?
I see.
But, uh, but we do have funding options, again, if we come up with a very good program, the state commission has offered us money, it's just we, we just need clarity.
You have to pitch it.
You gotta pitch it, you know, what's the, the plan, if we wanna do the girls empowerment camp, um, that was suggested.
So, so wait, you've gotta talk to us about the girls empowerment camp, and what it, what it entails, and, and who is gonna include in all of that?
Just let me talk through.
So that we would know as a commission what we're doing.
Yeah.
Uh, just saying girls empowerment is not telling us anything. But that would be at another meeting.
That would be another meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
So can we have?
And, and to be honest, that was reaching out with, uh, Sheila and, um, Sheila. Matthias.
Matthias, okay.
Um, she's got an interest in, through the Purdue Leadership Program to work with youth.
Okay.
And it would be kind of partnering on that, and I just haven't reached out since the questions were.
So I think, um, to Sarah's point, you wanna maintain a balance so that you have a basis upon which to, um, cover.
Yeah.
Another fundraiser, you know, in the past, when we've had Women's Equity Day, um, we've done like a luncheon that we hadn't charged for before, but that could be another opportunity.
Right.
Uh, to think about, um.
To, at least to cover costs.
Yeah, so, um. We had it at, um. Lubesnik. Lubesnik Art Center, and, and, and what's his name, used to cater that for us, but. We, we had a couple different caterers, and Lubesnik was only like two hundred, but I don't know if they do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know a lot of it.
Yeah.
They're doing, do using it normally where their art.
Yeah, yeah. But I think, uh, more opportunity to discuss, but, um, I think if you're gonna leave a balance, you do wanna have just enough to cover.
Right.
Now, um.
Or we not even need to be worried about that, because we've never really been approached.
We haven't really been approached, that's why I'm a, I'm a bit cautious about, you don't wanna, you don't wanna open floodgates.
Exactly.
So I don't think you wanna be saying, hey, we got all this money to give away.
Yeah.
I think it's, um, really promoting that, uh, we do have a commission that supports these initiatives.
Right.
And, um, you know, please, check us out on the. Yeah, we'll give one away each quarter. Website. Something like that.
Yeah.
It's cause, you know, inflation and the price is gonna go up from what we spent this past year. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, these are things we'll, we'll keep discussing then, as we're processing this.
So we're gonna table the minimum?
Yeah, let's table it, understanding what our call is, like, uh, how we're proceeding with letting the public know.
Right.
Um, yeah, yeah, sounds good.
And there could be an opportunity, again, to, uh, I know, Albertum was talking about donations for the event, uh, on March eighth. You may be able to solicit some dollars from, you know, like Franciscan maybe offering some money for. Nipco. Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe some of those opportunities.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea, process through.
Yeah. Then we wouldn't be spending out all of our money.
Yeah.
Then someplace may let us have it free.
Yeah.
If we go back to the ORAC during the week, we don't have to pay. Remember the facility, we just have to pay for the food, remember?
Yeah.
So if it's Monday through Thursday, there's no cost to use that facility. It's just you have to pay for your lunch, and so we could ask him to give us a price on the lunch.
Yeah.
You know, Mike's very nice about that. Well, that could be an opportunity for, um, Equity, Equity Day too.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, any, oh, I didn't put on here any commissioner comments. This has been a great conversation, I mean, I feel like everyone's really.
I think we've had a lot of comments.
Today, so.
Uh, we wanna talk real briefly about having it during the day, say two to three or one to four, what time you get out of school?
Three. Depends on the day.
Okay. With, with, on a Wednesday? Four fifteen. Four fifteen.
Four fifteen on the Wednesday.
But Thursday, our meetings are Thursday.
This is Thursday.
Oh, what are you talking about?
She, she was.
You're talking about March eighth.
I don't know.
In the weather.
Well, they're with.
Ah, gotcha, gotcha.
At night.
Yes, and so I make, I wanna ask that we change the time for the winter.
I was thinking about you, actually, um, on the way here, because you'd mentioned it last winter, and I was the only one, I'm like, you can't make it here in time. I, I could do it earlier, four thirty-ish, if maybe.
So part of my thing is if we're gonna make a request for the city, I'm sorry, I just jumped in, if we're gonna make a request for the city to, to move our meeting from this room into the council chambers on a Thursday, then you don't have to fight the weather, and the only thing you can't vote on in the Zoom meeting is budgetary items.
Yeah, but I don't. But I don't, we don't wanna be absent from the meeting, because it's important that we meet as in person most of the time.
I think there's a limit.
Yeah.
And, and I'm one of those people that is not gonna come out at five thirty when it's dark, midnight when I leave home, simple as that. I think we can come sometime in the afternoon, early evening before it gets that dark, especially in the wintertime.
I would never be able to that.
Yeah.
You wouldn't be able to do that ever.
Oh, jeez.
Where you coming from?
I'm a therapist, I'm at Strong's Usberg all day.
So you're just, so you're a little poet until?
I'm in Michigan City, but I don't, I just got off work.
That's what I'm saying, what time, so you get off at five, five thirty?
Five thirty, and then if I have, depending on what group I have, I make it off at six, six thirty. So even though there's a limitation on how many times you can do Zoom.
And that's every.
You know, winter's not gonna last six months, but, uh, what's the number, three times?
Cause I felt they were giving up that Zoom, uh, since COVID was over.
COVID ain't over.
So they're not, okay.
I thought there's just a limit put on it to how many Zoom you can attend.
Exactly.
Right, and so it may not be every month during the winter that you don't make it, or.
There's an, there's an attendance policy, the same as, uh, attendance policy you have.
Yeah.
It matters how many times you can miss a meeting and be on Zoom, and it's usually three.
Yeah.
That means you miss three, you have to show up for that next meeting.
Even if it's late.
What do you feel, Mark, can do with somebody pick you up?
Hmm? No, I don't wanna drive.
So she's saying you're doing it at midterms.
It's like at five thirty, if you even at five fifteen here, it's dark.
Mm-hmm.
And we're all, we're, uh, we're all females and we should.
Right.
Run around it.
So that may be an option for you to do Zoom during the next three months. That's December, January, December, well.
I'm just saying, I understand what you mean, but we're trying to offer some options that just makes sense.
I'll make a choi-, I'll make a choice.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause it'll be an option that'll be available if we're in a different room with Zoom capabilities. Because we want, and I don't know what I'm talking about. I wa-, I enjoy the fellowship of sitting down in person. But when it's not possible, because me, I don't like to be out at nine thirty either, but.
Thank you.
And for people who have a late schedule, like Ms. Veronica.
Can't make it.
Options, options may be available.
For three months.
There you go.
December, January, February.
I show up in March. There you go.
So if you, so hopefully, hopefully I can get a sending to the council chambers for December. We have that off.
I might show up in December.
I'll let you know.
Chamber for in March.
Alright, so, um, woo, we're in the.
You're coming off.
We did turn in a half hour, but, um.
Just don't like being out at that.
Our next meeting is December fifteenth, um, and.
We're gonna be in council chambers. You're gonna make that arrangements.
I'm gonna try to make it an arrangement so we can be in council chambers.
December fifteenth.
Yeah.
If not, just give me a.
And I'll, but I'll let you all know if I can make that happen. If you can't do camp, council chambers. Oh, yeah, yeah, it'll be posted.
We have the EEOC room. The EEOC room.
Yes, and, yeah, the emergency bedroom. They don't do Zoom in there as a emergency bedroom.
Oh, that's so, that's good. We, oh, okay, yeah, it results in only one is the council chambers for Zoom.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll get on that. I'll ask, find out if you can do that. Um, make the change, so, um.
I will not be here next month.
Okay. I'm getting on vacation.
Sounds good.
Congratulations.
Nice. And next meeting will.
I was gonna question about Novio.
Hopefully next, uh, meeting two, we will have a legislative, um, component to what we're talking about.